Welcome, everyone. It's always nice to see a fairly full house. Welcome to our Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 5th, 2018. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for roll copies.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dornbecker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I don't see a lot of "I voted" buttons out there. I'm sure you all mailed in several days ago. Good. Can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Are we... Let's try this...
I don't think we're going to be able to.
No?
Oh, did you get it?
We're waiting to see if our electronics are working.
Okay. Hang on. Hang on one minute. There we go.
To adopt the agenda... Oh, look at that. This is exciting.
Yours, Mayor... Yeah, there you go.
We're not sure it's going to work throughout the meeting, but at least for the adoption of the agenda, it'll work.
Should be. Should be appearing.
Maybe.
It will. There we go.
There we go. All right. We're rolling.
Yay.
Next up.
One small victory.
A proclamation for someone that I think we all know. He got all dressed up for us and everything. I know... I know normally you see him in a white coat or maybe a black coat in his formal attire as a chef, but it's our great privilege to be able to recognize Bob Hurley and his entire restaurant staff tonight with the proclamation recognizing his contributions and his retirement. So please, Bob, join me at the podium. Chef. Once a chef, always a chef, right? So if you'll back up just a little bit, I need to get to the microphone here. The rest of the world is watching and listening. This is a proclamation recognizing the career of Chef Bob Hurley and the success of Hurley's Restaurant &amp; Bar in Yountville. Whereas Chef Bob Hurley, a professional chef for more than 35 years, began his Napa Valley culinary career in 1988 as a chef at Domain Chandon, then later as executive chef at the Napa Valley Grill. He became owner of Hurley's Restaurant &amp; Bar in Yountville on November 11th, 2000, where he provided seasonal California wine country-style dining influenced by Mediterranean cuisine. He also emphasized local producers in his wine program. Whereas Chef Hurley and his staff have been regular participants in charitable events, including the Yountville Celebrity Chefs Luncheon, celebrating Veterans Day at the California Veterans Home, Napa Valley Wine Auction, Copia, Guide Dogs for the Blind, American Center for Wine, Food, and the Arts, Napa Valley Mustard Festival, as a VIP chef for Hands Across the Valley Food Bank, the Stagland Family Vineyard Music Festival for Mental Health, and many others. Try to keep this to one page so we couldn't list them all. Whereas his extensive community involvement included the Napa Valley Film Festival, Sense Yountville, Yountville Festival of Lights, teaching table etiquette to Yountville Elementary School students, and as a member of the Board of Directors of the Lincoln Theater. He was named Yountville Chamber of Commerce Business Leader of the Year for 2018. Whereas evidence of Chef Hurley's personal commitment to the Napa Valley community were when he spent hours serving hundreds of meals to first responders during the October 2017 wildfires, and when Hurley's Restaurant remained open on New Year's Eve Day in 2005 despite severe flooding throughout Napa Valley. Whereas Chef Hurley is an avid traveler with interests in many cultures, cuisines, and lifestyles he has experienced. His devotion to global experiences has been seen in his special events, including his Dungeon Is Crab Festival, Robert Burns Scottish Supper, Mardi Gras Dinner, as well as special menus for Valentine's Day, St. Patrick's Day, Mother's Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and New Year's Eve. The highlight of his custom dining experiences was Wild Game Week during the fall, when he matched the grape harvest with exotic game dishes showcasing delicacies from around the world. Whereas Bob Hurley was born in San Francisco, he attended the Hotel and Restaurant Program at City College and graduated from the National Culinary Apprenticeship Program. He has been married to his wife Cynthia for 30 years and has two children, 29-year-old daughter Natalie and 28-year-old son Seamus. Formerly a Yountville resident, he lives in East Napa and plans to continue following his passion for world travel in his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved by John F. Dunbar, on behalf of the entire Yountville Town Council, recognize the acclaimed culinary career of Chef Bob Hurley and congratulate Chef Bob and his staff at Hurley's Restaurant &amp; Bar for providing years of outstanding restaurant service and community participation in Yountville. Thank you very much. (applause) Mr. Mayor, council and staff, and all the good citizens of Yountville who turned up Boy, after he was reading that, I just got tired. So I guess that does make me retired. I'm kind of collecting these things. I've gotten a few now. I got one from Mike Thompson from Bill Dodd. But you've got to know, and if you know me, that's a one. Being a local guy was what I was all about from the very beginning here. I was lucky enough to have a great staff who followed my lead on that, and not only followed my lead and direction, but also took it to heart. Some of the things that we did here were as much because of my staff as they were me. For the fire thing, for instance, when we went out and fed the first responders out there, my staff was two steps ahead of me on that one. It takes a good staff, as any of the good restaurateurs will tell you here, the successful ones will tell you, they couldn't do it without their staff. So this is for my staff as well. Thanks a lot. Thanks very much. Thank you. If anyone in the audience would like to comment, we're about to go into public comment, but anyone like to speak on Chef Hurley's behalf? I know Cynthia, I'm glad you could be here also to share this and let your entire family and your extended restaurant family know how much we all appreciate all that you've given to Yountville. We couldn't fit things in there like your Friday afternoon barbecues. And I mean, there are just countless other times that you, chef, individually, and also your team stepped up and helped nonprofit organizations, the town. Whenever we needed your services, you've always said yes. And so that's why you're getting so much recognition. You deserve it. And I'm not sure which is your next travel plan, but with your new hip, I'm sure you can walk 10,000 steps a day, at least. So thank you very much, chef. Then I will go... Oh, yeah. Let's do that. Now let's move ahead to public comment on anything else that's not on our agenda tonight. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward? Okay. We'll move right ahead to our consent calendar. I'm sure that's what you're all here for. Our two items, 7A and B. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Thank you, Hurleys.
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Is there... I'm not sure it's working.
Go ahead.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. We'll just verbally... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And Michelle will make it so electronically. I do want to recognize Michael Brunch and thank... The council would like to thank him for stepping forward and being willing to extend his term on the Measure A Financial Oversight Committee, which we just approved. Next up, we'll have the first of two presentations, our CAL FIRE Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar and council members. Jeff Bellier, Assistant Chief for the CAL FIRE Napa County Fire Department. Thank you very much. Apologize for the tardiness on our first quarter report. However, we'll get to it and ensure that next quarter is in a little bit more of a timely manner. So for our first quarter, which covered January, February, and March, you can see we broke down the call volume for our Yountville station here. And it's pretty much on track. About 50% give or take of our responses for that quarter were to the Veterans Home, about 16% to the town of Yountville, 30% to the surrounding unincorporated areas, and then 2% to the city of Napa. Again, with most fire agencies, nationwide trends, medical aids made up the majority of our responses, about 83%. And you can see it was pretty evenly divided between public assists, such as someone has fallen out of bed and needs help getting back in, they have a minor flooding problem, things like that, to traffic collisions, fire alarms, and hazardous conditions. Here we have a chart detailing the first quarter's call volume versus our five-year average. You can see they're very, very close. So we're really keeping on track with about the five-year average for the first quarter. Some of the major events, obviously, were the tragic event at the Yountville Veterans Home. We had a major vehicle accident with fire on Silverado Trail, and then some CPR calls. So obviously, March 9th will remain ingrained in all of our minds forever. Station 12 Resources were one of the first responding... First responders to the incident, myself, Battalion Chief Jason Martin also responded, as well as agencies from the city of Napa, some of our surrounding county fire stations, as well as AMR. During that entire event, we were able to bring in outside resources to cover the city or our station here in Yountville so that the level of service to the community of Yountville and surrounding areas were completely uninterrupted while we had a heavy commitment of resources to the Veterans Home. We did have a vehicle accident north of town resulting in significant injuries to some of our victims, or to the patients, excuse me. And then of note, the first vegetation fire of the calendar year occurred in February up off Crystal Springs in St. Helena, and Engine 12 from Yountville Station was one of the responding resources. Some of our special events, our station personnel helped with the setting up for the annual Kiwanis Club crab feed. They attended the celebration of life service for the victims at the Veterans Home. And obviously, we also helped with the Easter egg hunt at the Yountville Park. In addition to that, as traditionally, Station 12's personnel are heavily committed and heavily involved in our training program here in the county, not only with... During the first quarter, our 17-week annual Recruit Volunteer Firefighter Academy, folks from the station are there every step of the way, every Saturday, Wednesdays, and other days as needed, as well as the heavy commitment from our rescue team in additional drills for that. Worth noting that our rescue team for the last several years has participated in a Northern California regional training exercise competition down in the Bay Area, and traditionally we place in the top three out of all the teams. And we're competing against teams from large agencies such as San Jose Fire Department, Sacramento Metropolitan, Oakland, San Francisco, and last year, because of the dedication of our team members and the heavy commitment to training, they actually won first place. So very, very big kudos to them. Thank you. So the guys and gals at the station, they're heavily involved in that rescue team and have a lot of pride in continuing that program. We have some photos of the folk, the guys and gals helping out at the Easter egg hunt, some of that rope training, rescue training that I was talking about earlier, the first fire of the year, like I said, on February 13th. Some photos from the Veterans Home. And then obviously, as always, the station folks are continuing in the public education and fire prevention, and it's not uncommon for any of the businesses or any of the members here in the town to see the state engine or the truck parked, and the folks out walking around, looking at new businesses, looking at the new construction that's being done, and just interacting with our community. Again, I would be remiss if I didn't bring the ready, set, go, and the fire season safety message of creating defensible space around your homes, having an evacuation plan in place prior to. And obviously, we all hope that you don't have to evacuate. However, it is good to be prepared for that. And if anyone is looking for additional information, please stop by the station and/or check out the website ReadyForWildfire.org. And that is all I have. Thank you very much. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I can certainly see the delay in presentation was clearly caused by the beautiful color graphics you now have.
Right. Yes, and I can't take credit for that. Chief Martin did that, but that was one of the things, is we wanted to make it a little bit more snappy presentation than we have traditionally done, so that we give just desserts to taking your time in the evening for our presentation.
I'm sorry Sergeant Holman's not here to see it for the Sheriff's Department to feel some pressure.
Yeah, we'll make sure he knows about it for next time.
You'll send him the link, right?
I will. I will. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Next up, presentation from the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, the annual report. Welcome.
All right. Here it is. Good evening, councilmembers. Whitney DiBir McAvoy, President and CEO for the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. This is our annual report. Thank you so much for having us this evening. I'm excited to be here. We have some exciting things to share with you. I enclosed a detailed report in your council packet, so this presentation is going to be kind of a high-level overview. I know we have an election to get to later tonight, so I wanted to keep it short and sweet. First off, I'd like to thank all of our volunteers, board members, and staff for being here tonight. Thank you. Really great show of support for the chamber, so really nice. Okay, let's get started. All right. So presentation overview. Four sections. I'm going to do a brief overview of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce and what we're all about, go over our accomplishments for the last fiscal year, which is June 2017, July 2018, an overview of marketing the destination of Yountville, which is our partnership with the town, of course, and the NVTID Yountville, and then what's next for us. Okay. So what does the Chamber of Commerce do? We function and wear two hats. We're a traditional Chamber of Commerce, of course, with things like networking, economic development, resources for our members, and more. And we also serve as a destination marketing agency for the town of Yountville, which is our partnership with you all, and also the partnership we have with the NVTID Yountville. So we're a little bit different in that respect. We're very proud of that partnership. I think one of the things that makes us such a strong destination is that partnership that we have with one another. So thank you for that. Okay. Our vision and mission. So this past April, the Board of Directors approved our new vision and mission. So our new vision is to be the premier small-town destination, and our new mission is enriching the vibrancy of our community. Short and sweet, really, I think encompasses what we're all about. I'm not even going to read the old one. I think that this really points us in the new direction in what we're trying to accomplish. Okay. Our four key values. So we have created these four key values. They drive everything that we do. It's the heart and soul of the Chamber of Commerce. So the first one is building a thriving community, and that's all about creating those relationships with our businesses, between our businesses with one another, and of course, creating the relationships with our businesses and our residents, which we know is a vital, important part of our community. Promoting Yountville. So again, marketing Yountville as the premier destination, driving commerce. We believe in providing the tools and resources our members need to succeed. And then being your champion, of course, being the voice of business and improving the economic well-being for Yountville and beyond. Okay. So now you know what we're all about. Who are we? Our organization chart hasn't really changed much since last year. The biggest change is that we hired Fuller and Sander as our new PR company. We are governed by an executive committee and Board of Directors. Our Board of Directors is made up of 13 members, many of which you see here tonight. Richard Hall with Lady Family Vineyard... Lady Family Wines is currently our Board Chair. And of course, we have our two staff members, Elizabeth and Jessica. Thank you for all of your hard work that are here with us tonight. And of course, we have our 38 volunteers that help run our Yountville Welcome Center. Thank you. Many of them are here this evening. And we have our Chamber ambassadors, which help create connections between our business members and the chamber. Okay. So our chamber membership. We have two different types of memberships with the Chamber of Commerce. We have our business members and our associate members. Our business members are your traditional businesses. Our associate members are Yountville residents. We currently have 238 business members ranging from Calistoga to San Francisco and beyond, and we have 106 associate members. I love that we have these two different membership groups, and we're working really hard to make sure that they're integrated and connected. Some interesting things I wanted to share with you. Our top three categories for our business members, probably no surprise to anybody, is wine, dining, and professional services. And over the past year, we've worked really hard to strengthen and streamline our member benefits, so we're actually providing real resources and value to our members. That includes our associate members, which we've created some new things like our quarterly associate member Happy Hour, which we just had two weeks ago at BRICS, which was really fun. We also are including discounts at our local businesses with that membership, and a ticket to the Residence Bash, which is coming up in August, which we're all really excited about. And then one more thing about the business members is we created our Leadership Circle Program this year. We have 16 members currently participating. That is a program that allows some of our community leaders to invest more substantially in the Chamber of Commerce. These are people that are looking to invest in the long-term success of our community. So far, the program's been very successful, very proud of it, and we thank them for their support, many of which are here this evening. Okay. Accomplishments. So I've broken down these slides into four different categories, which I detailed earlier, kind of our guiding principles. And what we did in the last two years since I started, the organization's really made a strategic pivot in what we focus on. So we're trying to keep everything in these four categories to really keep us focused on the success of the chamber and, of course, our town. Okay. So building a thriving community. Three top-line things that we did under this category this year. And the importance of this, building a thriving community, is those connections that I talked about earlier with our businesses and our residents and the businesses between one another. So our monthly mixers are a huge success. We had over 1,300 business leaders attend these mixers over the last year. We started to do biennial mixers with the Napa Chamber of Commerce to strengthen our relationship with them. We have one tomorrow night, actually. And then we also started our Upper Valley Mixers with the St. Helena and Calistoga Chambers. We have another one in August with them. And those, of course, many of you have been to them, are super fun, so we always look forward to that every month. Our locals' light flight. So we created the locals' flight a couple months ago, and the idea is to foster better synergy with our tasting rooms and residents. We currently have 15 tasting rooms participating. That's everybody in town. And the idea is that if you're a local, you can go into the tasting room and get two complimentary pours of wine for you and a guest. It is valid, I think, Sunday through Thursday, and we have a number of residents have taken really advantage of that, I would. Super fun, and I think it's fostered a lot of goodwill between our tasting rooms and our residents. And then, of course, we just had our membership jubilee on May 9th. Thank you for those of that attended. The whole point of this event was to celebrate our business and community award winners. Bob Hurley, of course, was recognized as our Business Leader of the Year, and to foster a sense of community with our businesses and residents. Hugely successful. We had over 300 people there. It was a lovely evening. So those are just a few examples of us building a thriving community in the last year. Being your champion. So this is all about us advocating for a stronger community. The three top-line things we did the last year, the general plan update, we are all very familiar with this. Remembering to create that balance between business and residence for the next 20 years. It's something that we talk about all the time. As a member of the tag, it's something that we constantly kept in the front of our minds at our meetings. We've also participated in a number of the workshops, and of course, will continue to do that moving forward. Tasting rooms, patio service. Thank you for your support and collaboration with that initiative. Now we have four tasting rooms that can serve wine outside with service. That includes Gerard Stewart Sellers, Jessup Sellers, and Priest Ranch. I want to thank town staff for their collaboration on that as well. It was a lot of group work to get that to where it needed to be, and I think our guests are experiencing the type of hospitality that they've come to expect from Yountville. And then lastly, for being your champion, after the fires in October, about two weeks after the fires, we had a meeting with around 60 people from the Yountville business community. Almost every single business was represented at that meeting. And we talked about how we wanted to market the destination moving forward. Were we even ready to market the destination? Are people ready to have visitors again? Were we ready to move forward? The resounding answer was yes, and I believe that really shaped our message to move forward quickly in remarketing ourselves and getting back into the space. And it was really cool to see all those people in one room really collectively coming together as a community to say, this is what we want to do next. Driving commerce. All right. So we are a catalyst for business growth and strengthening our local economy. Three examples of how we accomplished that this year, we created the Y Committee, which is the Wine Hospitality of Yountville Committee. It is made up of all of the tasting rooms and wineries within one-mile radius of Yountville. We are focused on a couple of things. That includes keeping business in Yountville first and foremost, referring each other's customers to one another, and then creating new programs that can enhance our visitors' experience, which dovetails into the Wine Walk. So the Wine Walk was born out of the Y Committee, and it is basically a program to encourage our visitors to keep coming back to Yountville again and again. Visitors collect, have a stamp card, and get stamps on their card after they've visited tasting rooms, and they get prizes once they've hit 5, 10, 15, and 19, all of the tasting rooms and wineries that are participating. It's pretty cool. It's been really successful. We're looking to improve it and grow it, but for the first time we've done something like this, it's really great. We're not discounting experiences. People are paying full price for this. It's all about bringing commerce and business to town. And then our marketing seminars. So for the first time this year, we did the Marketing Seminar Series, featuring four different topics about four different things that will help our businesses market themselves better. So first was Facebook ads, how to use them, what they mean, how they can improve your business. The second one was Google Display Network, what that means, how to use it, and Google Ads. And then we also had branding, how to distinguish your brand from other neighboring wineries, which was really interesting. And then content management, so how to build a blog, how to write an email blast. And that goes under really providing our tools and resources for our members to help them succeed. We had 125 people participate in those seminars, and they were super successful. We're already planning to do them again next year. And then, of course, promoting Yountville, and this kind of dovetails into the marketing piece we'll talk about next. We have a new website, yountville.com. If you haven't seen it, it's really fantastic. Since we launched it on October 1st, we've already had 131,000 people visit the website. To give you an idea, the fiscal calendar last year, we had 150,000 people visit that in 12 months. So it's been super successful. It represents the destination like we want it to. Beautiful imagery. The information is really easy to consume, and then it also features our new blog, which is really fun. We have three different articles that we post each month. So check it out if you haven't seen it yet. And then our digital marketing campaign. So I mentioned the NVTID Yountville earlier, and we partnered them with them this year on a digital marketing campaign to raise awareness of the destination and drive visitors during the slow season. We focused on Google, Facebook, and Instagram. I'll go into detail a little bit later. But top line is, we had 54 million impressions for that program from October 1 through April 30th. So getting the word of Yountville out there and into people's minds as they're starting to plan their trips to come to wine country. And then, of course, our Welcome Center, which is, you know, the heart and soul of our promoting Yountville, our 38, that represents our 38. Our 38, that represents our 38 volunteers. For those of you that don't know, we were remodeled by Restoration Hardware in December. If you haven't seen it yet, come by. It's absolutely beautiful, but the space is more information-focused, a better, more inviting guest experience for our visitors, and is a really beautiful space. Okay. Marketing the Destination of Yountville. That's our little wheel. Our marketing is comprehensive. Those are all the different things that we do that are included with marketing the destination. So, I'm going to go through each one of those at exhaustion, so you'll be really bored. It's going to be great. Yountville Welcome Center stats. So, this year, we had over 19,000 people visit the Yountville Welcome Center. We are open seven days a week, nine to five. Much of our Welcome Center is managed by our volunteers. They do a fantastic job. We made over 12,000 referrals, and you can see the breakdown of our visitor statistics there. Something that we're trying to keep in mind is remembering that a lot of people are getting their information on mobile devices now or on their computer. They're doing their research ahead of time. Our visitors are a lot smarter and more savvy than they were previously in terms of using online information to gather information before they come to the destination. So, we still consider the Yountville Welcome Center as our, you know, first hello to visitors. We see a lot of visitors that are just coming into Napa Valley. We're the first welcome center that they see, which is really nice, so we're providing a positive experience to them while recommending our partners through and all around the valley. So, the second part of the visitor statistics is that we like to keep in mind is yountville.com. So, that is our website I mentioned earlier. So, you'll see the total stat there, 164,000 is how many people we've had to the website from June 2017 through April 2018. So, you add in those couple of months, and we already surpassed last year, which is great. So, you'll see that visitor count to yountville.com. A lot of that increase has to do with that digital marketing campaign I mentioned earlier. That has really driven a lot of traffic to our website. Also, you see the breakdown of who visits our website. Majority of those visitors are 25 to 44 and 45 to 60. That's the typical visitor that we see to Napa Valley. That is also skewed female, which is also typical of what we see. And then, you'll see the five major state markets in which those visitors are visiting our website, all of which is very typical for the Napa Valley. Okay, social media. Social media is, I would say, the heart and soul of our digital campaign for promoting the destination. Despite what people say, Facebook is still one of the primary consumers of information for people online. We focus heavily on Facebook and are very successful at it. So, we have three primary strategies when it comes to social media. First is promoting member content. So, this is our hotels, our local businesses. This also includes upcoming events like the Yountville International Short Film Festival, Yountville Live, Holidays in Yountville. And then, the second is driving traffic to yountville.com. So, all of our links are driving people to our website where they can acquire further information, so that kind of builds in that relationship with the website. And then, the third piece is building the Yountville brand. We want our social channels to be a trusted source for all things Yountville. So, if you're looking for new and upcoming events or information about our members, you can trust our sources and our, our social channels to provide you with that quality information you're looking for. So, we've had incredible growth for our social channels over the last year. We've grown on Facebook by 25% in terms of fan growth, by 26% in terms of engagement. So, that's when somebody either likes a post or comments on your post. On Instagram, we have seen 130% increase year over year of Instagram fans. When I started here at the Chamber, we weren't doing anything on Instagram, and it's the fastest-growing platform in terms of consuming beautiful images, which our destination does perfectly. So, it's perfectly aligned with what we're all about. And then, Twitter. We've seen a little bit of a drop between our growth on Twitter. Honestly, it's a little bit hard to use Twitter to promote a destination, so we're reevaluating that, whether we want to continue to use Twitter moving forward. We're looking at Pinterest as our third option now moving forward, which a lot of people are using to source articles about destinations or build their board about what hotels they like or wineries they like, and then they'll visit that again when they're planning. So, social media continues to be a huge win for us. We can continue to stay above and beyond our competitors in terms of the other municipalities in the valley, in terms of our followers and engagement. So, pretty exciting. Our digital marketing campaign. Okay, so, on the right, those are examples of our, two of our banner ads. The whole part of this campaign, the whole messaging behind this campaign, was the strollability of Yountville, the romance of Yountville, and what it means to come here. And the idea that you can find something unexpected around every turn. I think these ads really showcase that. We worked with our marketing committee really closely, who oversees all of our marketing of the destination about these images and what we were trying to say. This was about a six-month process to get to this final result. So, we took a lot of care in what we were trying to do, because this digital marketing campaign was the first of its kind for us. So, we'd never done something like this before, so we wanted to make sure we got it right. So, you'll see the campaign ran from October 1 through April 30th, 54 million impressions, 107 direct clicks to yountville.com, and 116,000 site sessions on our website. So, it was a smash hit. It, you know, exceeded all expectations. We worked with the TID on this. They funded it directly, and the Chamber just managed it. So, we spent $145,000 on this campaign over six months. We're exploring whether or not we're going to do it again into that funding level. And our, like I said before, our three primary platforms for that, for Facebook and Instagram, Google Display Network, and Google Ads, so, or Google AdWords. And our target, target audience for that, so just so you have that in mind as you're thinking about this, was lodging guests and day trippers, 35 to 64 years old with a combined household income of $150,000. And our target cities were, you know, Bay Area, Silicon Valley, Los Angeles, Houston, and Dallas. So, pretty successful campaign on that front. Okay, TripAdvisor. So, we've been doing TripAdvisor for a couple of years now. This, to the right there, is an example of what our page looks like. We participate in the Premium Partner Destination page. They have this special for destinations. It includes banner ads for hotels and upcoming events we've had. And then, of course, we have articles and top-10 lists on there as well. We had over 92,000 page views. That's from August 1 through April 30th. You'll see over almost 4,000 banner clicks and 774,000 banner impressions. So, part of this program, we get to run banners all through the TripAdvisor site, so we get to do that from January 1 through April 30th, and that's where that big number comes from, that 774,000 banner impression. So, TripAdvisor continues to be kind of a work for, workhorse for us. We, we update it often, you know, it's great. We like it. No issues there. Public relations. So, like I mentioned earlier, we hired Fuller and Sander Communications to manage our public relations. They started on July 1 last year. You'll see there are some examples where we were mentioned in the news. Yountville is often in the news, and those are some of the highlights. We also partner with them for fam tours, so Familiarisation tours with journalists that are going to then write about Yountville in their publications. We've had five so far this year. You'll see them listed there. We have three more coming this summer, including a special with KGO Bay Area Life, which you might have heard of that, that airs on Sundays on ABC. And we're looking to shoot that in August, so that'll be a television special on Yountville. So, that'll be really fun. And then, we're also still partnering with Forbes and Departures Magazine to come here in a little bit. So, 660 million impressions for these articles is obviously a wide reach. We enjoy working with Tom and Monty. They do a great job for us and work well with our partners. Okay, Yountville Events. So, we, I wanted to focus on kind of the two ones that we control that market the destination. So, Holidays in Yountville, the brightest town in Napa Valley, ran from November 19 through December 31st. So, we retired Festival of Lights, and we reimagined it as a six-week promotion to encourage people to come back to the destination during the holiday season. So, we created a calendar of events, featuring 25 different businesses, offering 75 unique events that people could come to Yountville and enjoy. So, this is stuff like ornament making with Kris Kolar and Kolar chocolates, Gingerbread House contest at Stewart Sellers, Gingerbread Man decorating with Bouchon Bakery. So, things that families can enjoy, we can all enjoy together. It was a smashing success. We also had, of course, our community tree lighting, which was really fun, very busy, but still very fun. So, overall, I was really pleased with how it went. All the stats are included in your packet. I won't run through them, but the impressions were fantastic. We had over 50,000 people come to our website during that six weeks alone. We spent almost $10,000 just marketing this campaign during those six weeks, and pretty successful, and people are looking for fun stuff to do with their families. So, I think it was a no-brainer. We hit it out of the park, so that was a fun one. And then, of course, Yountville Live, which was March 15 through the 18th. Over 4,000 people came to Yountville over those four days, food, wine, music. Of course, they had many partners here in town and outside of town as well, serving wine and food. Great time. I know it brings a lot of business to the town. We're already working with them on plans for next year. We're going to make some good strategic changes to tighten that event, to be more successful and to bring the right type of clientele to Yountville. So, hotels were sold out, so bringing people to Yountville during the slow season checks all the marks for that. And then, what's next? So, a little preview of kind of what we're doing next year. We have our five strategic objectives that the board approved in April, and this is for our three-year strategic plan. These objectives will stay the same for all three years, and then we have the tactics underneath them that staff execute that change each year. So, the first one is generate positive economic impact for Yountville and the surrounding community. Second one, exceed visitor expectations. Third one is nurture and cultivate productive mutually beneficial relationships for stakeholders. Four, run an effective business. And then, five, influence the long-term direction of Yountville and its brand. So, some of the examples of the tactics that we will be doing over the next 12 months for that. So, expanded marketing of the destination. We're going to build on the success that we've had this last year, and that goes for everything, our membership and, you know, our marketing, and really kind of hone that in, and then take strategic steps to just make it that much better. Develop relationships with regional and statewide organizations to increase visitation. So, think like Visit California, Visit Sacramento, Visit San Francisco, those folks to try to bring in more regional business. Promotion of Yountville Welcome Center as a destination. We have a beautiful space. We have friendly volunteers. We want to promote that more and encourage people to come there. And strengthening partnerships and our membership benefits for our members. So, those are just a few things that we're going to be doing over the next year to really hone in and build upon the success that we've had. So, not trying to grow, we're just exponentially, we're trying to build on the success that we've had. So, that's it. Thank you for all of your continued support and engagement with us, and I think we're really lucky to have council that's so supportive in a town, and our volunteers and Board of Directors that really support what we're doing and help us lead the way. So, thank you for that, and I'll take your questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on the report?
I will say that we have, between the two presentations tonight, we've really ramped up our graphics game. I mean, very, very nice.
Thank you.
So, thank you, and I, and I know Steve and I, sitting on the TID board as well here, some of the additional work that the Chamber is doing, so rest assured in that lodging-specific environment, there's great progress being made with some of our new management of our properties, and there's been a real seamless connection there. So, that's another kind of a microcosm of the overall picture that you were presenting here, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you all for being here and representing Yountville every day. You're out there on the streets and in the Welcome Center.
[applause]
[inaudible]
Okay. We're just here, watch.
Number six. Okay. Yeah. I'm glad to be recording. I was wondering how.
I'm just, I'm just glad we could all be here for you. Yeah. Number six, USA Today, right?
Yes.
All right, there we go. Well, thank you all for coming out here and representing your efforts. It's all very much appreciated, but not just us, but our whole Yountville family. So, thanks. You're welcome to stay all night if you'd like. I'll take that as a no. As our audience is going out to enjoy the beautiful evening, we will move on to our public hearing for this evening, which is a design review of the JCB Salon Preve, presentation of a new sculpture.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pretty sure elevation plans are going to be just as exciting as the.
Is your mic on? Is it, you got a green light going there?
It is on.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Before you tonight is a design review application submitted by JCB Collection for the placement of a seven-foot-tall plaster statue to the front entrance of the JCB Salon Preve at the southern elevation facing the parking lot. Now, as you already know, this parcel features many businesses, one being JCB Tasting Salon, Atelier Gourmet Food and Espresso, Overland Sheepskin, Yountville Sun Offices, and of course, up for discussion this evening, the JCB Salon Preve. Now, if you can direct your attention to the screens, this is kind of the project description slash elevation plan. The applicant is proposing to install a replica statue named "The Winged Victory" within the planter strip at the southern elevation of the Salon Preve, near the front entrance, now pretty much near that rear parking lot area. The plaster sculpture will stand approximately seven feet tall by three feet wide. Now, this does include the wings, wingspan. It will rest upon a two-foot-round-tall base, which will be mounted to a concrete pad approximately six inches thick, well within that planter strip, so it's not encroaching by any means within the public right-of-way and the parking area, anything like that. Now, the applicant does plan to illuminate the statue with an existing landscape light into the evening hours. And again, if you can direct your attention to the TV screen, at the upper left, you'll see the highlighted blue circle. That is the proposed location. And we'll just go through a few pictures here of the statue itself. Now, the statue would represent placement of private artwork on private property. This piece would not be a part of the Yountville Art Walk, which, as you know, is a rotating collection of outdoor sculptures and art pieces. That program's been in place for approximately five years now, in which we've seen 40-plus sculptures kind of rotating constantly. So, not to be confused, it will not be a part of that program. There is one art walk, art walk sculpture located on the subject property. It is located in the planter strip at the back of sidewalk in the front of the Atelier Building. I would like to note that if you, if one would happen to be standing right there on the sidewalk, not only would you see that sculpture with the blown glass that spins on top, but if you look down that view corridor, you'll see that silver barrel. The proposed sculpture will be directly west of that at the front entrance of the Salon Here's another up-close image of the existing art walk sculpture. Now, directly south of the Mulberry intersection, we also have the Prometheus Rocket Ship. And then, kind of highlighting the analysis section within your staff report, this is the portion of the property that we're really discussing, the southern elevation of the Salon Preve. Private artwork, artwork is considered, considered to be a physical improvement to property. In this case, while the artwork is consistent with the business aesthetic, it does not represent the retail items that are sold either in the salon or the preve, and it is not considered to be an outdoor display of merchandise. That said, it is subject to use permit, or that, although it is subject to design review and use permit approval, excuse me. Staff finds that the, that the design and placement of the sculpture is consistent with design review criteria. I would like to note that this proposal did go before the zoning design review board last month. Three of the five members were in attendance, and it passed for recommendation for approval with a 3-0 vote. Members of the ZDRB did feel that this was a classic example of private artwork on private property, that it is located within an appropriate location, and that it does not encroach within the public right-of-way. One member did happen to express that they did wish JCB would have selected more of a unique style of a statue compared to something that's really mass-produced, like this replica. Now, with that said, staff and the representative of the applicants are here to answer any questions that you may have, and it was a pretty brief staff report.
Great, thank you. Before I open the public hearing, any specific questions of this? Before I open the public hearing, any specific questions of the staff report? No? I'll go ahead and formally open the public hearing and invite representative of the applicant to tell us more.
I'm Ellen Springwater. I'm a Operations Manager with Bousset Collection. I think, it was said very well, they did, you know, he did all the graphics, I didn't get to do any, but...
A lot of pressure doing graphics tonight, maybe that's a better thing.
But it is a very classic, one of the most celebrated statues in the world, and a representation of Jean Charles, our proprietor's aesthetic. And, you know, as mentioned, it was approved by the design review board, and I'm here to answer any questions if I may, and do them at best.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions? No. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and invite further discussion by the council or action. Councilor Dorman?
Thank you. I have only one question about finding number one. The second sentence says it is a plaster replica of a famous historical statue and is consistent with the aesthetic of the business at which it is placed. I have some issue with saying, with us making a finding it's a famous historical statue. I don't pretend that it's not. I think most people have heard of Winged Victory, but I certainly am in favor of it if we could just say it is consistent with the aesthetic of the business at which it is placed. I don't want to put the council in the position of calling out what's historical and what's not.
Okay. We'll certainly take that under consideration if we're moving forward. Any other comments? Councilor Durham?
So, I understand the findings that were made, but also to speak to Councilmember Dorman's statement, "It will properly and adequately perform or satisfy its functional requirements without being unsightly or creating substantial disharmony with its locale and surroundings." To me, it does the opposite of that. So, I'm just confused. I understand it's art on private property, but if we want to talk about aesthetics consistent with the business at which it is placed, we're talking about this building, to me, it's disharmonious. It's not harmonious to its location, given the type of building. And to me, it's, maybe a sign would serve best to draw people's attention to the location. So, I understand the finding, but I think the finding could also be made that it is, I don't see harmony with anything in that area. Also, number three, "It will not directly or in any cumulative fashion impair, inhibit, or limit further investment or improvement on the other properties." And so, the answer brings into the art, and the answer to this finding brings in two comments about the Art Walk program, which maybe something could be said for the fact that even though it says it's positive in terms of diversity and interest, we have 40-plus pieces in rotation. Once again, maybe a sign would work best in this location to draw attention to it. I think it speaks to, I'm just, I really come back to finding number one with it being harmonious to the business and its situation, and I don't think that it really finds that. For me, the finding is not there, and the same with number three, I think it could go against the Art Walk as well. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Just to be clear, it doesn't say it'll be harmonious, it says it won't be disharmonious.
Yeah.
Technically.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand.
Other comments? I will go ahead and mention, I agree with Councilmember Dorman's comment about not putting us in a position to identify the famousness or historicalness. I see easily taking out that language. I think this is one of those questions that art always stimulates, which is what is harmonious or not harmonious, what is appropriate or inappropriate. One of my original concerns of art, whether it be private art or in our Art Walk, is not representing something that we feel is inappropriate. We have intentionally stayed away from spiritual imagery that could be considered inappropriate as a public art, but, you know, I think we're all quite proud of how much art we have in this town, and much of it is on private property. If I walked through all of the private art, I wouldn't necessarily find it something I'd want at my own home, but I get that it's adding to the overall aesthetic of that property. I do, knowing this business and what's inside, this absolutely fits the aesthetic of what Jean Charles is bringing. So, I see it not so much as an identifier as it is a bit of a, kind of a preview of what you're going to see inside. It's, there's still a wow factor when you open the door, whether it's to the Salon Privé or the tasting salon itself. So, I think that it does work, that it's unique, and in that sense, I can see your argument that it may not be harmonious, but the uniqueness is what's going to attract the eye, and that's exactly what I think the applicant is going for. So, while it's not three deer on a grass meadow in front of Hotel Yountville, or something that might be considered a little bit more mainstream, certainly the other example you gave across the street for the, I'll just call it the Rocket Ship, I'm not sure how harmonious that is, but some people love it, and it just provides a different experience for people visually. So, I can support it. I think originally when I saw the intent to light, I was a little concerned. I could also envision our applicant doing a searchlight to represent this thing, but coming in with the appropriate landscape lighting just to add soft lighting, I think, is appropriate. The way the aesthetic has changed on the exterior of this property, I also think ties into this particular sculpture. So, I can support the application as it's presented with the one minor language change in the first finding. Other comments or action? Yes, Councilmember Dorman?
I have a comment first to Councilmember Durham's. I think this is just a tough ordinance to apply to art, period, paragraph. It's really more for a building or something. It's just, it's a tough fit. So, when you look at the substantial disharmony, is it my favorite piece that I'm going to walk by and see there? Frankly, no. But then, when you look at what the rest of the art is around that area, it makes it more harmonious to me. But I just, it's kind of a tough fit.
If I could, I wanted, thank you, Councilmember Dorman. I wanted to explain that this actually is a challenge for staff in terms of making some of the findings, because the findings are required by our ordinance for you to go through. So, I want you to think that in general, the finding would be the construction of a building as opposed to the placement of a small piece of art. When you talk about, you know, is the building, is the construction harmonious or, so it is a challenge, and maybe it's something, although I'm not keen to put it high on our staff workload, because it doesn't happen often, but I do think, to your point, we're taking some things and extrapolating them down to a very minute detail because of the commercial nature of the placement and how it requires it to go through the process, whereas it's not, it's not a building, you know? It's not an addition, it's not a renovation. So, maybe after we finish the general plan update and the first 10 policies, we'll come back and revisit that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, you know, art is a very subjective thing for everyone, and while I also may not choose this piece of art as my favorite in town, I still think that it does represent Jean Charles very clearly, and so I have no problem with allowing it. But I can understand where Councilmember Dorman is coming from if we want to remove the reference to historical, and so I can support it with that as well.
Thank you. Any other comment? If not, is there action? Councilmember Dorman?
So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 18-3490, approving the design review for a seven-foot-tall plaster statue to be located at the front entrance of the JCB Salon Privé at the southern elevation facing the parking lot located at 6505 Washington Street, parcel number 036-081-011, with a change to the second sentence of finding one, so that it simply says it is consistent with the aesthetic of the business, and takes out references to famous or historical or plaster replica.
Thank you. We're going to try to do this electronically, I think. But I don't see any buttons at all, so let's just...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm anticipating this not working, because I can't even see the buttons at all.
(inaudible).
No.
No.
Okay, thanks. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Dorman and a second.
A second.
Vice Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Any opposed?
Nay.
So, is that four to one? Did I hear four and one? Yes, so that passes four votes to one. Thank you. And thank you for being here to represent the applicant. We're going to move ahead now to a discussion item, proposed ballot measure to increase TOT, or hotel tax, by 1%. Steve, did you want to introduce this before?
I will, but I first want to acknowledge that this was our planning fellow Curtis' Sawyer's second full meeting on a more complicated issue as we work on his exposure and development in terms of that. So, just wanted to acknowledge that in Sandra's absence. So, yes, the item before you is really a placeholder for discussion on the proposed TOT. As you know, the council has had several conversations on the topic based on a request by Visit Napa Valley for the council to consider participation in the regional effort to raise the TOT by 1% to use for regional workforce housing. At your last meeting, you selected the mayor and Councilmember Dorman to represent the town at the countywide stakeholder meeting along with town staff. The dialogue has continuing. I put some brief outlines in the staff report in terms of where some communities are at. I think what's important for the council to know is that a good, Councilmember Durham asked a good question, which was, did the earlier focus group look at a assessment district approach? And I shared with him that they had, and that was to Visit Napa Valley, met and worked with a number of their lodging folks. Ultimately, they came to the conclusion that they wanted to recommend to the jurisdictions the TOT. But I did want to at least share with all of you to know that the concept of a tourism improvement district assessment was looked at, evaluated. It was felt that it had some constraints with regard to meeting the nexus for lodging housing, and therefore that a general tax that the TOT would be imposed would not have the limitations or focus on housing. Also, it would have been in a very new area where there hadn't been a whole lot of prior experience. So, at the end of the day, lodging evaluated both of those, made the recommendation to pursue and recommend the TOT. But just for some background, I thought that was important that you know how that was looked at. Also, it's important to share that the city of Calistoga, which has been discussing this in their community for over a year, has made it very clear to the participants that regardless of what the rest of the jurisdictions and the county do, the city of Calistoga will be moving forward with a ballot initiative on this topic. With that, I provided some background material, and what we're hoping for out of tonight's council discussion is some direction in terms of, one, do you want to proceed with putting something on the ballot, and if you do, direction on what that might be and some of the discussion that you have there. We also shared with you background on a 50% general tax, a two-thirds requirement for a special tax, and I also, we need to remind you that the current ballot initiative may include a measure under the Transparency Act that says it doesn't make any difference if you use the 50%, because everything's going to need two-thirds. So, just kind of the, that's the environment right now out there that we're looking at with regards to this measure. So, when you talk about the special tax versus the general tax with an advisory use, given the new, the potential of the approval of the Transparency Act, and it would be retroactive, hypothetically, if you had a general tax pass with 58%, it would be null and void because it didn't meet the two-thirds. So, changing an environment.
But that hasn't even qualified yet, so that's a big one to even be considered.
It hasn't, but I'm just cautioning, in terms of the discussion of pros and cons on the 50% threshold or the two-thirds, I just want you to be fully informed in terms of the discussion. And with that, there's background material, but really, I think, in short, the communities were generally supportive, less or so in St. Helena and American Canyon, but I think there was a general interest from the unincorporated county, Napa, Calistoga, and you guys will make a determination as to where Yountville falls in that conversation today.
So, I'll start off, and then I'm going to invite Councilmember Dorman, since she and I have had, been a part of the two-by-six meetings, but also additional conversations between the two of us to make some recommendations for your consideration. I want to bring up one thing about the TID, and then what we are doing and what we're not doing tonight. The TID conversation also was a challenge because we're talking about workforce outside of just lodging, and so there was a greater interest in providing workforce housing for, even beyond hospitality, even though the lodging industry is the group that is bringing this forward, along with Visit Napa Valley. And so, it would be an even harder sell for the lodging community as the tourism improvement district to say, yes, they'll add an assessment that makes their room rate higher when the workforce housing projects could be for employees of Ranch Market, they could be employees of the elementary school, they could be employees of wineries, it could be any employees, because we would not be able to discriminate on what type of jobs or where those specific jobs are in the workforce. I think that was one of the reasons the TID concept did not move forward. What we are doing tonight is talking about should we put this on the ballot in November? We're not saying we are in favor or opposed to this. We're saying should it be there for the voters to decide? We need to move quickly in order to qualify for November of this year, which means we would have to decide on, by June 19th, our next meeting, if this is going to be part of our call for the election. We have proposed ballot measure language that we have discussed between the subcommittee members. We are waiting to hear more from some of the other jurisdictions, because we all agreed in our meetings as a two-by-six committee that these should be either identical or very similar ballot measures to avoid any kind of confusion with the voting public. It sounds like most of the jurisdictions are either very supportive or at least a level of supportive, even including St. Helena recently, sounding like they are coming around. American Canyon and St. Helena were hesitating because they had other priorities in addition. It wasn't they were opposed to this, it's that they wanted to potentially put this money elsewhere, and that would potentially confuse the overall voter. The other thing that already is confusing is the requirement that we have a local jurisdiction initiative and a county initiative. So, we will see two similar, if not exactly the same, initiatives on our ballots in November if we do this. and a county initiative. So we will see two similar, if not exactly the same initiatives on our ballots in November if we do this because the county, the unincorporated county has to have its own initiative that we would all vote on, and then each of us would vote on our individual jurisdiction. There is the possibility that some jurisdictions say yes in November and some jurisdictions say no. If that's the case, those that say yes will be generating that additional revenue, and those that say no will not be generating that revenue. There will be an agreement amongst all those that agreed to move this forward, and then assuming it's voted into law, where we identify things like workforce housing and related programs. What does that mean? We plan on getting together as that two-by-six to draft language to that effect. Also, and I'll leave some of this to Councilmember Dormin, there are other definitions and other pieces of ordinance language that individual jurisdictions see as priorities, but we're trying to find kind of a unanimous agreement on what the language should be. This is not exclusively affordable housing. This is workforce housing as a general term. Related programs, again, to be defined. It does require as a special tax, it would be a two-thirds vote of the people as opposed to a general tax. One of the reasons for the special tax is to make sure that the money goes where we're saying it would go. As a general tax, which would be 50% plus one, a council in a jurisdiction or future councils could redirect those funds to anything that they wanted to. As a special tax, it would be required to be maintained to go toward the defined workforce housing and related programs. I'll stop there for now. Councilmember Dormin, if you want to share some of your insights and... If I want to follow up, I will.
Thank you. So this has been a very interesting project for me. Thank you all for appointing me. All of our envision Yountville and our surveys have shown a great desire in our community for a more diverse demographic and economic bases. And I think that, looking at this, this might be a really good way to help make that happen. And one thing that is a good prospect about it is the regionalization, which I think we might have touched on before. And that is, wherever money comes in, if you don't have land, we might be able to partner together to get things done for our county as a whole. So, and again, to echo what the mayor said, tonight we are only asking ourselves, do we want to give our residents the opportunity to weigh in on this possibility? And I will come out of the gate saying I think that we need to give our residents the opportunity to weigh in on this. And some questions do remain. We have had some discussions, both just the two of us and also at the two-by-six, about a sunset clause, the possibility of a sunset clause. I was strongly in favor of one. I now can see, because of what I've learned, Supervisor Pedrosa, I think, put it pretty handily. He said, "There is always going to be a need for workforce housing in the Napa area." Our town manager has raised about the need for, if there is a sunset clause, for it to be long enough because we would like to bond. I think that would give us a lot more flexibility if we were able to do bonding. And I think the agreement the mayor talked about, that is going to be, I think, heavily negotiated. And I certainly think that one thing that we would certainly could and would want to put in it is maybe there is some sort of a serious look at it every five years so that it goes back to the voters, so that it acts as a de facto sunset clause. I think the mayor touched on what is a program or a service. Again, that's going to be, it's great because it gives us flexibility, and it will give us flexibility when we do the multilateral agreement to talk about what programs and services are for each of us and for all of us. I also looked at some sort of... We have discussed some sort of possibility of an oversight committee. I think that is going to happen at the county level. And I also think that's something that could be handled in the agreement. So this has been... I've come to the conclusion that it is perhaps more sudden than fast because the idea is, in my view, worth considering. The fact that it sprang up suddenly, maybe we don't have as much time to really mull it over as we like. But we do have, between now and when it actually... The election in November, if we were to choose to call that election. It gives us a lot of time to get the i's dotted and the t's crossed.
Two other things I'll add. One is, this would give us more time and coordinated effort than the cannabis situation did when that was basically handed down to us by the state who said, "You must act now even though we can't tell you what you're acting on." And so that, there was, I think, more uncertainty there. Not knowing exactly what the definition of workforce housing is, to me, is easier to define and then move forward to regulate than not knowing the definitions of anything related to that cannabis ordinance, just as a recent example. Just as, touching back on the tradability of units, we have 17 housing units required under our current housing assessment. We must maintain a valid housing element or we risk losing significant state funding. We have one now. Seventeen units doesn't sound like a big number, but when you think about the limited space we have in Yountville, it is a challenge. But what we can do is raise funds that could then be used to buy those units from a city like Napa or American Canyon where they have large housing projects that they can handle. And so we could potentially fulfill our state housing allocation requirements without having to build the units in areas in Yountville that we don't want overly infilled. I think that's a significant benefit. Also, what this does, if we're looking at the current... Under the current budget estimates, we're talking about roughly $650,000 to $700,000 this would generate that would return to Yountville. This is not going to go to the state. It doesn't go to the county to dilute it. It stays here for us to use as we see fit. At the very least, what that does is it frees up, in my mind, $650,000 to $700,000 that's in our general fund and elsewhere that we can use those funds to do other things, whether it's other infrastructure improvement. We can't use the money from this measure, but we could put our housing projects under the scope of this money and then have other money to do, whether it's utility undergrounding, whether it's improvements, whatever it might be. So I see this as more flexible because it allows us flexibility in our budget going forward. I think we've touched on kind of the general. We have a draft ordinance. This is not the official ordinance. Again, I want to make sure people understand we are just talking about, will we on June 19th support adding this to our election? Just as recently as today, before the Flood Control Board met, there were mayors and supervisors there. And individually, it turns out, we were asking, what is the timeline for this? The county is kind of leading the coordination of the unified ordinance language and the unified ballot language. Steve is coordinating with county staff, and the other jurisdictions have city staff coordinating as well. So we all believe that we can get this together by June 19 to have at least a clear presentation of language for us all to consider. Again, not voting on it, not final, but just, do we want to move forward with the process? So, did we cover everything we wanted to cover for now? So, questions of any of our staff reports, Vice Mayor?
I have a question for Councilmember Dormin. Did you mean to say that you thought that there should be a sunset clause that says every five years it'll sunset?
No, sorry. I was saying that I don't see the need now for a sunset clause because I think we can handle it in the agreement by saying that every five years there will be a pretty robust look to see, are we using, are the jurisdictions using it for housing? Do we still need that money? I think we can build in that.
Would you want it to go on the ballot every five years?
No, I would want, in just the agreement, to say we would look at it... The jurisdictions would look at it and then decide if it was prudent at some future point to bring it back to the voters to say, okay, we've done what we can with this.
I think a good example is Measure A and the flood money. So that was a 20-year initiative that's just sunsetting now. There was an oversight committee that regularly reviewed to make sure all the jurisdictions spent the money the way it's supposed to be spent. But it wasn't going back to the ballot every so many years. It had a defined period of time. But the difference there... I don't even know if we need to get into the individual conversations about sunsets or not because we haven't gotten into the content so much as, do we want to let this be put on the ballot? And we will have future meetings where we need to drill down on those types of specifics. There may be ideas from other jurisdictions that say, it's a great idea, it's a terrible idea. And then we want to be able to evaluate that for our own local ballot initiative.
And then I also have a question for you, Mayor. So how does a special tax make money available in the general fund? Because right now, the money that we... You know, we don't usually purchase property from the general fund anyway.
And I only use that as a very broad example. What I mean is, this would be $650,000 to $700,000 of new money.
Yeah, okay.
And this would be targeted money for workforce housing support. That means we have, let's say, $700,000 more in our budget to allocate. So now we have $700,000 to allocate toward housing issues. That means we have other money, whether it's general fund money or special fund money. We have other money available. Does that make sense?
Let me try... In the past, we have used general fund contributions to put money into the Housing Opportunity Fund. So you have used general fund revenue to support your housing objectives, which have included subsidy for a Royal Grande and other programs. So in some ways, that does allow you to do that. And I would also say, I had the opportunity to speak with the city manager of Healsburg on Friday, where, you know, this was the genesis. The nature of the programs and services, they include a number. And I just kind of want to expand a little bit about the mayor said. But if we need to support infrastructure so that affordable or workforce housing can be brought to a site, say, for example, we've talked about the constraints at the Catholic Church parcel needing... That's a good example of where this money could be used. It can be used for infrastructure if that's a decision the council makes. It could be used to purchase some of the affordable homes that are coming out. And that's why I just want to say, the range of things that the town could potentially do with the money under your control, with or without the sharing agreement. Because the agreement that the mayor and Carrie are talking about, Councilmember Dormin coming back, is going to be more of a formal, how would we share if you choose to share? You don't have to. I mean, you may come up with, for the first several years, a number of projects and things that we can do locally using the money in Yountville. So that's why I want to say, when you have that ordinance, you're keeping... And the mayor said it well, this is local source. Money comes back. We get to use it based on the priority and prioritization that the council determines.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll use another example. The oversight, I think the Measure A is a really good example of how that could work. Measure T and Senate Bill 1, transportation dollars, are a good example of how we can get Measure T money that goes toward street improvements, you know, repairs, potholes, whatever. Now we don't have to take money from the general fund, put it in our transportation projects at the CIP. It can go somewhere else. So it's different colors of money. It gets the job done. Just, that's where Maria goes to work and moves money around and makes things happen, and Joe goes and builds it. So...
Those were my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? We're not acting on anything official tonight. This is informational for June 19, where we will have a more formal presentation of the entire...
Correct. What we do need, Mayor...
Yeah, direction.
We need direction because right now, the direction provided, we're working on including the call for election with the mayor, the council seats, the GAN limit override. And then if you're adding this, we'll be incorporating that into the call for election, fine tuning the ballot language and fine tuning the ordinance. So from a staff perspective, we do need to tighten up. My understanding is we're hoping to have some of the agencies share their draft concepts on Thursday so we can fine tune that. Because I do need to remind everybody, we need to be making a decision on which direction we're going on the Tuesday prior to the 19th. So the 12th, 13th is about our deadline for having stuff in in order to make the agenda packet and the deadline. So 19th sounds like a long ways away, but it's not because of those things. But we're very close in working with the ad hoc committee. We'll be able to, you know, based on your direction, move forward and have that. And obviously, whatever we bring to you on the 19th, there's going to be opportunity for the council to take a look at, modify, or change based on your direction.
Yeah. I'll just say, and I think Councilmember Durham is getting ready. What we have in the packet that we're looking at right now, Councilmember Dormin and I have already made recommendations of some language changes. This stuff was drawn, I think, from Healsburg, Calistoga, and the county. And we have made some changes and corrections, I think. There were references to general tax and board, as in board of supervisors, where that would not be appropriate for us. So, Councilmember Durham?
Sure. I just have a couple of observations as well. I'm still, I... We're all for affordable housing. We're all for workforce housing. But all of a sudden, the discussion comes that it's in our backyard, and all of a sudden, I'm voting at my desk and my position might possibly change as I put my ballot into my envelope and mail it away. It's interesting to me because Councilmember Dormin talked about we, the citizens deserve to vote on this. And I still have to come back to the fact, we're talking about... I'm going to come back to a couple of points. I still don't see the difference between doing a TID or a TOT, or having TOT. From my research with the TID, it is something that could be done. And this is where my confusion lies, is that if the hotels are so behind it, then they're behind workforce housing. They're not just behind hospitality, employee housing. So no matter which way it goes, it's workforce housing, whether it's a TID or whether it's a TOT. I contacted Civitas, who helped Napa Valley put together their management plan, as well as helped Humboldt County put together our management plan where my hotel is situated. It was very... It was, I wasn't talking to a lawyer, and I'm not a lawyer. But the discussion was had that they felt that something like this could be done through a tourism improvement district. And on top of it, you wouldn't need to create a new one. You could do an amendment to the current plan. So there we go. But also, what's interesting too is, this came out of nowhere. All of a sudden, it's in everybody's face. You want to talk about sudden. You want to talk about heightened needs. You want to talk about, we need to meet this date now. This workforce housing has been an issue for years. And now all of a sudden, and it's an election year. I'm going to call it out. The county supervisors are much more in tune to the elections. I thought they would have been well ahead of this game 10 months ago, and I'm surprised it came so quickly. So that's my other thought. My other concern is that we're talking about tradability. We're talking about regionalization. What if we're the only ones who vote for it? That all goes right out the door. Napa, Calistoga, St. Helena, American Canyon decide not to do it. Then here we are alone, hopefully being able to work with the vets home, hopefully being able to work with that parcel over by the Catholic Church. And those things all change the dynamics of it as well. And St. Helena and American Canyon are all of a sudden, to me, throwing a wrench into this whole conversation by now talking about, we want to raise our TOT, but not just for workforce housing. We want to pay down debt. We need a fire department and all these things. And that mixes up the message and makes it very convoluted. And just how much is Visit Napa Valley going to be behind marketing this for a November election? And then how do you play in, American Canyon and St. Helena are behind it, but hey, this is a great opportunity to raise the TOT, and we'll finally get some fiscal responsibility behind us because we'll now have money based on the tourist? It's not just about workforce housing anymore. And trying to find a unanimous voice in this valley, good luck, you know? I mean, Measure C alone puts that... I mean, Measure C alone puts that there. It's impossible to get a unanimous voice in this valley. My concern is also, come November, we're going to have, I'm going to call it, we're going to have a Republican as, on the ballot for our governor, we're going to have SB1 repeal, we're going to have a GAN limit override for Yountville, we're going to have all these votes about, well, two of them will be about numbers and taxes. The others will bring out a higher voter turnout that's just going to vote no down the, down the ballot, when we need 66.7% of the people to agree to this. Now, with all that said, I'm all for it. But I, I just, I don't understand this process, and this what makes it confusing and makes people go, what the heck's up with the politicians? What are they doing? I mean, I still come back to the fact, if Visit Napa Valley is behind it, why aren't they doing a TID? And what if we decide to move forward with this, this, to put it on the ballot, what if it loses? Where does that leave us? Do we then turn around to a TID? Do we then turn around to a different process? I really don't have faith in the 66.7% at this point. So those are my thoughts and my comments.
Thank you. I'll just respond to one part of that, which is, I think if we support moving forward with this process and have it put on the ballot, and it fails, we're no worse off than where we are right now.
Yeah.
So I think there's kind of a no-loss situation. If we, I also find it interesting that we have the, we as local residents have the opportunity to basically impose a 1% tax on lodging industry, which has accepted that responsibility in general, I don't know that it's 100% agreement, but substantially, and all those lodging management partners that we have in Yountville have agreed to support this. We have the ability to have our visitor tax dollars help us pay for localizing housing. We have the ability, as Napa has proven, to have prioritization of housing. You know, there are some legal restrictions that Kerry could probably talk to if I step out of line, but with some ability to subsidize, obviously based on proper criteria, whether it's public educators or law enforcement, though some of the public service demographics have been permitted. Age restriction is not, other demographics are not allowed to be prioritized, just like hotel employees specifically could not be prioritized. But I see certainly the process going forward to allow us to at least finalize the content of this effort by the time we have to file for the election. And I agree, 2/3 is, and it should be, a challenging number to achieve. But as Councilmember Dorman said, we sometimes hear from our local residents that we want the visitors to pay more. Well, this is an opportunity for the visitors to pay more.
It is, but it's a situation where we want them to pay more, but we want them to pay for water. It's on public record, everybody said it, but I don't necessarily want those people living in my neighborhood, let's be honest. And that's what makes it concerning.
But that's my point, is that this is not just about the lowest levels of income housing. And I think that's where some people might go to that kind of not in my backyard place. This is, as I said earlier, this could be teachers at Yountville Elementary, this could be employees at Ranch Market, this could be employees in any of our Yountville businesses, or up at the veterans home, or it could be in Calistoga, it could be in American Canyon. We can't guarantee they will work in our town limits, but we can all but guarantee that they will be reducing traffic congestion based on not having to come from Fairfield and Vallejo and Vacaville in Sacramento to come to work. I think that's the general effort that we're all in agreement. How we get there, you're right, there are jurisdictions that are prioritizing debt relief, that are prioritizing transportation. It's not that we're opposed to funding transportation, but we see it as, we already have other colors of money to help us with the transportation needs that we have. That's through the NVTA, that's through Measure T, and if SB1 survives the attempt to repeal that, that's substantial money that we'd be seeing for transportation-specific projects. We don't have that type of revenue source for workforce housing, not yet anyway. Other thoughts?
I have, I have thoughts. I think Yountville always does it best. And throwing in with the county, I still have lots of questions, I didn't really go to the meeting, I don't know who's going to advertise this, I don't know how we're going to get the information out there in time, I think this, I think we, I speak for all of us, that we all agree with this concept. I think that 66.7% is extremely high hurdle to get over. And I think we have the best shot at doing this if we put a general tax on, it's 50% plus one vote, it's, and that is a big difference, is probably hundreds of voters just within Yountville. So I think that the general tax makes the most sense to get this passed, not the special tax. It's just too high, and I don't want to fail at it. And I think we should give ourselves the best chance at succeeding. I also think the, having the advisory comment, just like we did with the community center, the advisory comment said, we are putting a general tax for the TOT on the ballot, and we will, do you agree that we should use this for the community center? And that's what we should do for the workforce housing as well. I think that the public, as we know, because we've encouraged them all to come and talk to us, would have, they'll be hanging us, you know, on the Washington Street if we don't use it for that. So we have our own checks and balances already in our public, who, if we have an advisory statement that says, this is, do you agree, this is what we should use this money for, that we'll use it for that. I think with that, we stand the best chance at getting this done by doing it the Yountville way and trying to give it the best shot we can at passing. I'm not really worried about the Transparency Act, there's so many unknowns, I'm just going to put that aside, and we'll just kind of see how that plays out. I do think we do need a sunset clause, just like Measure A, I don't, you know, I'm, maybe Al Prado's correct, and maybe he's not, I don't know. But, you know, to have this and then have to like claw something back later, I think 30 years is very reasonable for lots of things. You know, I can't predict that, you know, absolutely, we're going to need more workforce housing in perpetuity. We really don't have that much land to build stuff, even if we did a lot of things, but 30 years seems pretty reasonable to me, and I think that the main reason I'd want a sunset, I think it gives us that little extra bit that we need to get this passed. And I'm willing to take any extra little bit I can to get it passed. I think a citizen advisory group also gives it that little incremental favor in getting there. So of course, we're not going to say, at least I'm not, that no, we're not going to go out to the voters, but I just don't think we're giving ourselves the best shot by doing it fast in the county way. I think we can do it best if we do it ourselves.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes. I think, you know, I agree that getting 2/3 of the voters to approve it, even if we are expert at advertising the fact that it's the visitors who are going to be paying this money, not them, I, I do believe that that's, they're going to see special tax, and I, with all the other things that are going to be on the ballot, I'm concerned that it wouldn't. And I'd be very happy to have it be a general tax with the advisory, and commit to the advisory to say that these are, that this is how these dollars will be spent. But then we would need 50% plus one, and I would be much more comfortable trying to get that. I, you know, we all agree that we need this. And so I can support it being on the ballot, but I really think that in order to have the best opportunity for it to be passed, that it should be a general tax with the advisory. I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Any member of the public want to chime in on this conversation? So what we can do is take back the ideas of the TID amendment option and the general tax with an amendment to try to achieve the same required spending process to the 2x6 and see where that lands. I know one of the concerns is, we're trying for a collaborative effort here, so that one jurisdiction didn't have one thing, and another jurisdiction have something different, which would confuse the visitor a little bit, potentially. But we're trying to be cooperative with our other neighboring jurisdictions, too. That doesn't mean that Yountville can't still, I mean, we do it best, that's, I mean, what's, I stood strong against American Canyon and St. Helena when they were being very pointed and focused about their own individual interest, rather than being willing to participate at a broader effort. I don't think we have to stand alone to do it well, or to do it best. I think we could do that by being at the table with the other 2x6 representatives and crafting something that we can bring back before our meeting agenda is finalized for the 19th, that maybe we can all be comfortable with. Hopefully, that's the case. Councilmember Durham?
Thank you. Can you? The, and I think this may be a question for Gary or Councilmember Moller, the advisory piece of it, if the general tax were to occur, what is the meaning of that from a legal standpoint?
Yeah, so the council is allowed to put two types of measures on the ballot. One are ordinances, and the other is an advisory question, which essentially asks as a matter of policy or hypothetical to the electorate, if the council or the town should do a particular thing. So the way that these are sometimes set up is, the first ballot measure is whether or not to impose or increase the TOT. The second one is, should measure, whatever that measure's called, pass, should those funds be spent on the following purposes? It's not binding in a legal sense, it has political effect, because if it is passed, there's pressure to spend it for those purposes. But the advisory question, it's just the same as basically polling the public on how, if they agree that it should be spent on those purposes or not. But it's not binding on this council or any future council.
It'd be the same as the general tax, 50% plus one, without an advisory. It's still discretionary.
Correct.
But as you say, there's a political risk if the council then says, okay, thanks, public, for telling us you want it to be for workforce, and now we're going to put it towards something else.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I, I agree, I think we should try to get back to the 2x6 and see what all of our options are, and I think the question is how we can communicate that properly, or if we can communicate that properly to council in plenty of time for the meeting, just the timing of all that, to get the agenda together, all that, so.
Well, we have Steve representing staff with us as well in those meetings, so certainly we could do that and not violate any Brown Act communications.
Right. Yeah, I would just add to that, too. I do have some suggested revisions to the actual ballot language and the ordinance itself, and I don't know at what point in the process it would be helpful for me to provide that feedback. And I know you guys are still in discussion, so I want to make sure that I can.
Right.
The election, just because the election code requires some very specific language to be included, and so I can help sort of provide that feedback and guidance, but at a point that's meaningful for you guys.
And that's a little bit why some of the language was in the earlier draft, so, but again, if we see where some of the proposed languages, I'll make sure Gary's copied on that, but again, that's where the county, the coalition effort was to try to have consistency generally on the ordinances and the ballot language. And there may be some nuances that are appropriate to put in the jurisdiction. So the last email I had from the county was that they expected to have something on Thursday.
And the county staff is telling me today that they would like us to send our draft. I didn't want to do that prior to our conversation tonight, and so we can have you send that out as early as tomorrow to county, so that they hear what we have worked on, plus what the dialogue tonight has made as other options.
I can certainly share that the conversation was concerning about both options, the plurality of the special tax, and also the consequence of, you know, effort to try to get it passed in 50 in the advisory, and what we currently have drafted. And I know, I believe the two of you have been working on the ballot measure language, so I can forward that. I don't believe I have that right now, the most current one.
We have it to get to you. Councilmember Durham?
So if, if American Canyon and St. Helena move forward with the discussions that we read about in the paper, which you alluded to, that's a general tax, or that's a special tax?
I'd have to see, I have to be very honest with the.
St. Helena's discussion was about a general tax, it would be general fund money, 2% for their hotel. They were, they were discussing with no finality yet, but 2% general fund, general tax, and they could use it at their discretion. They have debt service relief that they need, is a higher priority than they feel the housing need. American Canyon is more interested in transportation than the housing effort. And those are specific priorities to those jurisdictions.
So have we already lost our consistency throughout the valley?
Yes, sounds like it.
Those aren't final decisions from either of those jurisdictions.
And I'm not saying, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm for workforce housing, and if we have nothing to lose, except for the time and energy that we're putting into this, then I'm, I want something on the ballot. But I don't, it sounds like we're already, once again, it comes back to that unanimous decision in this valley. It's already starting to take its own priorities, given the location of the valley, so, then.
And that might happen as well, is it could pass in some jurisdictions and fail in others, and you get to the same result, which is, it could be that Napa, Yountville, and Calistoga approve this, and they have 1% higher tax on their hotels than the other jurisdictions, and we live with that. We generate money that then stays in Yountville, and American Canyon and St. Helena, for example, would not have that new revenue. They'd have to find it elsewhere. Councilmember Dorman?
I, I kind of look at it as, I mean, I share your concerns, Councilmember Durham, and really everyone's concerns. But I look at it that our money, our estimate of our money that would stay here for Yountville would be $650,000, $700,000 a year, and possibly more. And with that, we could do quite a bit right here. I mean, we could do, I know, we could buy manufactured homes, and we could put them, if we could go with the Catholic Church. I mean, we have some options. We could, I know Napa County has a proximity ordinance that helps with down payments. I mean, I think there are a lot of opportunities, even if we end up being the Lone Ranger, which I do not expect, but even if we do, I think there is, there are valuable things in it for us. And that's why I'm really wanting to get it to our residents for a vote. And, I mean, I do appreciate that we have things to do before we get to the election and before we get to the next meeting, and I'm willing, I think we're all willing to do those and work together. But the end goal, I hear everyone agreeing on, and I don't want that to get lost in the details. Maybe eventually, it might have to bow to the details, but right now, I think it's too early to make that call.
I agree with you completely, and that's been the basis. My discussion is, all of a sudden, it's been so quickly, and it could have, all of a sudden, it's been so quickly, and it could have been the TID, and it could be a special tax, and it has to be TOT, and we're forced to make a decision right now, and I want it to be successful. I don't want it to go to the ballot and lose, so I agree with you.
So I'm hearing general consensus that moving forward with the process is, I think, unanimously agreed upon. Defining the language in the ordinance and in the ballot measure itself is still to be vetted. We need to get back to the 2x6 and get more feedback, because there are other council meetings tonight where this discussion was going to be happening. There may be now a universal interest in a sunset clause, for example, or no sunset clause. And so we just need to get back into this conversation and have another county-wide meeting in time for us to know before the election needs to be called on June 19.
So I have a process question. So we don't know what's going to happen out of these conversations, because they haven't, obviously haven't happened yet. So if we really, as a group, don't like the outcome of what's brought back, and we really think we can craft something better, how would we really accomplish that between now and June 19?
Have a long meeting on June 19.
Correct. And I mean, I'll be very honest with you, it will not be, you know, it can be challenging, but for us to put together the staff be challenging. But for us to put together the staff report, the various elements and the options, and then it becomes a wordsmithing, "Do you want this? Do you want that?" So we'll have it, you know, and you at the, I think what's important is, on the nineteenth, you will have to make a decision. So on the nineteenth, you'll have to make a decision. Are you going with the two-thirds special tax, no sunset, any of those things that you might want in it, we need to craft that that night. Now, we'll work on the drafts that are the most furthest advanced, include those in the staff report. It's not unusual that you might have something that you have to fine tune. The same way, you know, we heard some comments on the GAN limit proposal, so that'll be on that nineteenth. So the council will have the opportunity. You know, what we'll have to do is submit the most current draft document for public review, and the council, timely with our agenda process. If there's another meeting that happens after that, it's no different than when we've dealt with that, and the ad hoc committee would share that information, and somebody would suggest modifying the proposed language to this or that.
Yeah. And everyone agrees also that this is on the fast track, and it's not the best way to do it. But the option is wait two more years to deal with almost three thousand dollars a month in an average apartment rental, and six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for an average house. So there is an effort, albeit...
There's other options, though. That's my, and that's my, so, but I don't mean to, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
You're right. No, you're right, that moving too quickly may miss some of the options. And it might ultimately be that we say, "You know what? It isn't right to do it right now." And that is a viable option for us to consider, and all jurisdictions to consider. If we're not comfortable with what we're going to present on the nineteenth, then we say no.
But, I mean, back to my original point, too. We could still decide to go it alone. That, you know, if they, we can't come to agreement there, we can at least have that discussion.
Yes.
That we are going to go alone. That doesn't seem like that's...
Calistoga's already made that decision quite clear, as he pointed out in the beginning of his report, that they're going forward regardless. So we're not going, we wouldn't be the only ones. Calistoga has said, "We are moving forward." And they were going to move forward, I think basically, they motivated the other jurisdictions, in particular the county, because the county had been deliberating with Calistoga about other things up there. And they're like, "Well, this might be a good idea for all of us." And that's, I think, where that kind of stemmed from, is Healdsburg did it a year or so ago, two years ago, I guess. And then Calistoga was using them as a template and modified it to their own needs. And so here we are.
Well, I mean, I think we need, as long as we don't, the more discussion we can have tonight, although I know we've got election results coming out in six minutes, I think it's going to save us time later. I mean, I would like to see, if we do have consensus, that whatever is brought back just does not work for us, is that something that we, as a group, would be willing to go it alone?
I don't think it's appropriate for you to ask us to give you a vote on a what-if at our, for our next meeting, where we're going to discuss an item. We shouldn't say, "We're going to guarantee to you that we're going to go it alone." I don't think that's appropriate.
I'm not, I did not say that, John. I asked, "Do we have consensus that that would be something that we would be willing to discuss next time? If what doesn't come back really work, is that going to be a viable option that we would consider?" That's all I'm asking. And if you don't want to answer it one way or the other, you have that right. I am just trying to get some opinion. I'm not trying to sway it anyway, but I'm trying to give us some different options that, so that we can move forward.
Okay. Vice Mayor, did you have something?
Well, just, you know, we, that's what we've been saying, that that's when we're going to really drill down and get into it and figure out exactly what we want it to be. We may not agree, but, you know, I think, I'm, I do believe I want it on the ballot. I just want to figure out how we get it there and what it's going to say. Yeah.
Okay. So we have our task to get refined language that we, as a local ad hoc group, have already crafted, and compare that to the other jurisdictions, and see if they have information that we want to add, subtract, and where the other jurisdictions stand after tonight's council meetings. Okay?
And just to be clear, our June nineteenth agenda item will be broad enough for us to act on anything we've talked about here tonight.
Yes.
Am I correct on that?
I'm going to say, basically, I have a call for election staff report. You've got the language you're currently seeing in here, and it gives you the flexibility. Your responsibility is to figure out the ordinance and the ballot language.
You could delete the entire content and start over.
Boom, boom. I mean, there'll be some legal things that Gary will make sure. But, but yes, everything you've been talking about is going to be able to be addressed, with the exception of a TID. The TID has to come from the lodging properties individually. There's a different process for that that is required. But all of the things that you're talking about in terms of adding elements to the ordinance, adding elements to the ballot language that you've talked about, all germane.
Okay. Any last comment? All right. Gary?
Yeah, very quickly. In terms of the different options for the next meeting, clearly, the transient occupancy tax can just be taken out of the resolution quite easily. But in terms of the two different ordinances that will be in there, whether or not it's a general or a special, or whether or not it has an advisory committee or not, or a sunset or not, certainly, we can draft two types of ordinances that can be brought for consideration. If there is direction beforehand, that's going to make that process a little bit easier. But what it sounds like is that there will be two versions of the ordinance at the meeting, one for a general, one for a special. It might actually be four versions, I'm talking about it. And then a version for each that includes an oversight committee and/or a sunset. Is that what I'm hearing? I just want to make sure that we have you guys.
I'll throw something out.
Councilmember Moller?
Why don't we have two, one for a general, one for a special, and add both the sunset or the advisory statement into the general, and add the sunset and the advisory into both. That way, we can cross them out if we don't want either one of those things in either one of those ordinances, rather than add them in. But it's six of one, half a dozen of the other.
I'd like to leave it up to council and staff to craft what you, you've heard us today. We don't need to wordsmith to death right now.
Okay.
You have, I think, proper direction from us. Correct?
Yes. Thank you. I have enough.
Thank you. Okay. Staff informational reports, do we have any? All right. Council meeting reports. Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District met today. Prior to that, the Napa County City Selection Committee met, and we appointed, based on our regular rotation, the City of Calistoga Vice Mayor, Michael Dunstford, to be the chair for this next year. And American Canyon Mayor, Leon Garcia, is the vice chair. Flood Control Board established two special revenue funds to receive the balance of Measure A money, as stated in the sunset language of that measure. And we opened the budget hearing of the 2018-19 budget, discussed a little bit about those special revenue funds, and then continued that hearing to June nineteenth for final adoption. Napa Valley Transportation Authority, there was a brief report.
Yes, thank you. We met on May sixteenth, and we will meet again next week. The biggest item, I think, of importance on May sixteenth was, we did discuss post-employment benefits and how to fund those.
And nobody has an answer. Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, is there a report?
Yes. Upper Valley Waste Management, all three jurisdictions of the valley, besides the county, decided to have a cleanup day this year. And I just have some tonnage to report, because it's kind of interesting. St. Helena collected eleven point six tons, Calistoga five point two. Yountville came in first with eighteen point nine tons of garbage for the cleanup day. And if Maria's back there, it's going to cost us seven thousand two hundred and three dollars for that service. So congratulations there. Also, there's always a silver lining to the fires, or we at least found one, that because a few years ago, we added an extra dollar per ton of waste that goes to Clover Flat, and we did that, we were trying to make thirty or forty thousand dollars to support all the hazardous household waste events, we actually made six hundred thousand dollars for the JPA. And so our next meeting, we're going to actually look at the options and what we can spend that money on. So that's good. And we also had a LAFCO meeting yesterday. The, well, first, yeah, let's do the LAFCO. One of the major things, and our own Mr. Rogers was there, was that we did approve going out for requests for proposals for this very important countywide water and wastewater municipal service review. That will, there's been stakeholder groups, focus groups, and there was a lot of discussion at the board. It will be countywide. There were some who didn't want to do it in the East County. So I think that's going to be a very significant, very important project for the whole valley. Right now, we have it on our work plan to maybe have it done by December of 2019. But it's going to be a pretty big project, depending on how it actually, the information comes out and it gets scoped. Also, at the Napa County LAFCO meeting yesterday, there were two awards, one that we're going to present to, at, recommend to the Cal LAFCO Conference, one for Mr. Rogers for the Mike Gotch Courage and Achievement in Local Government. And the board also is recommending me for the Commissioner of the Year. And the Cal LAFCO update is that we are moving forward with, and it's doing quite well, our initiative AB 2258, which will, it's gone through the funding committee, so that's good. We are going to be asking, this is the first Cal LAFCO-sponsored bill, looking to get some funds, about three million dollars, so that we can use it primarily to help other LAFCOs pay to dissolve special districts that are inactive. But if we get this money, we're going to be going back for more, because all of our LAFCO activities are unfunded mandates. And also, Cal LAFCO might be raising, they're looking at considering raising their dues, or maybe increasing the cost for the annual conference, just because everything's costing more, and we're not, we're barely eking by on things. And I'll be attending Thursday, the California League Environmental Quality Meeting.
Okay. Watershed Information and Conservation Council, any report?
No, not at this time. I'm waiting for the minutes. Neither I nor Councilmember Durham could attend. It's the first one I've missed in six years. But when I get the minutes, I will give you a report on that. And I'll be attending the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee meeting for the league on Thursday as well, Sacramento.
Thank you. Other meeting reports from folks? A couple recognitions I'd like to make. One was, Councilmember Dorman was the keynote speaker at the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veterans Home on Memorial Day, and she did an excellent job there. And she and Joe Tagliabashi represented the town in Yountville Coannis, taking the wreaths up to the monument of the Unknown Soldier. Had a nice crowd in attendance with that. I also wanted to recognize the Native Daughters of the Golden West for their sixtieth annual memorial service at Pioneer Cemetery, and the special recognition of Yountville resident Lee Hart at that service, for all that he's done for Pioneer Cemetery and the history and heritage of Yountville. We do have to go back into closed session after this meeting to continue an earlier closed session discussion. Is there any other business? Seeing no other, we'll retire to this closed session. We do not, I believe, anticipate reportable action from this closed session. Do we, Gary?
If there is a final evaluation of the town manager, that should be reported out at the end, simply for the record.
Okay. But then we would be, if there's anything finalized, it'd be coming back at a future meeting for actual adoption.
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to adjourn to our closed session, our next regular meeting, Tuesday, June nineteenth at six. It sounds like it's going to maybe be a lengthy one. So we'll adjourn to closed session. Thanks.